Apologies, we had, uh, working through a couple of things. We are needing, first of all, I'm Lauren Shackelford, I'm chairman of the current Washington County Planning Board. We have a board of adjustments meeting and a planning commission, planning board meeting tonight. We need six voting members for the zoning board of adjustments meeting, so I'm recommending that we change and do the planning commission meeting first if anybody has any objections.
You need a motion?
Please. Actually, no, I don't need a motion on that.
Okay.
We're in agreement with that. Okay, then let's move forward and start the Washington County Planning Board meeting, please. We can call roll.
Joe Maynard. Jay Piercy.
Here.
Neil Hill. Maria Banks is absent. Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, next on the agenda, we do have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Those minutes have been sent out for review. Any questions, comments, or motions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the December seventh meeting.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item three is the approval of the agenda for this Washington County Planning Board meeting. I would make the recommendation, item B, and the first item in land development hearings is actually in conjunction to the variance that's on the zoning board of adjustments. So if we could move that, instead of B, move it to the end, which would be D. And we'll have to adjourn that meeting and go and hear the board of adjustments before we hear that. Anybody have any issues or on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjust the agenda until such time as we can hear that.
Got a motion? And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move forward. First thing on the planning board meeting is a conditional use permit for the county for kindness in motion, conditional use. Start with staff report, please.
Okay, so we've got our vicinity map showing the surrounding parcels and the site map. And then these are the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to build an office space on her property for a house call veterinary service. The parcel is located within Weddington Woods Unit Seven subdivision. The subject parcel equals approximately two point two-two acres in size. While the business itself will provide routine veterinary services with a provide, with a primary focus on end-of-care life, or end-of-life care, sorry. The proposed office space is only intended to be a home base for mobile operations. Aquamation, also known as alkaline hydrolysis, which is one of the primary services that will be provided, or bio cremation, uses a combination of mild water flow, temperature, and alkalinity to accelerate the breakdown of organic materials. The pet remains are dried and processed for return to the owner. There is currently no law, legislation, or regulations for alkaline hydrolysis in the state of Arkansas. The business will be operated by four employees, one of which is part-time. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM, and Saturday, nine AM to three PM. There is an existing gravel driveway with three parking spaces for employees. The applicant desires signage, a maximum of six foot by six foot, non-illuminated, to be on the building. And to date, planning staff has received seven comments in opposition citing compatibility, increased traffic, property values, and health and safety concerns. We have a number of conditions from the health department. Most notable conditions are that ADH recommends that an inspection of the functionality of the existing septic on the residence be conducted by a designated representative to reassess its functionality to verify that it is compliant and large enough to conduct a business as in, as is installed. And the ADH also needs to be consulted if changes to the present arrangement occur in the future. And for our planning conditions, um, we've got the standard conditions as well as a couple notable ones, including the fact that handling and disposal of waste material, debris, pet remains, and all other byproducts and chemicals utilized by the veterinary practice shall comply with local and state regulations. And they must meet and maintain ADH and ADEQ, safety and sanitary regulations.
Yeah, I want to add like a couple of notes. The, the property owner and the practice owner, she already conducted the ADH to do like the septic inspection. And they recommended it to be like cleaned out, and she already had that scheduled to be done tomorrow. And she already applied for the EDQ permit, and she is waiting on response. And as soon as we get all of this, we'll update our project folder as well.
Just for my clarification, there is no septic for the building proposed.
Uh, the, the, the building itself, it's not, it's just going to be utilizing, uh, the facilities like in the house next door.
Okay, just want to make sure I read that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else from staff? Okay, questions from the board for staff on presentation? Turn your mic, turn your mic on.
Running guy.
Chemicals, the chemicals used in this process?
She's gonna use potassium hydroxide and sodium hydroxide, both of them are like, you know, they're like alkalines. But when she mixes them with the, uh, when she uses them for the, the, uh, product, uh, for like animal aquamation, and eventually she uses like a fertilizer to neutralize them. And that byproduct is taken by another company to be dispersed somewhere else in a pro, um, close by city. And I guess like it, it goes to Fort Smith to be dispersed somewhere that is not for human use. It's gonna be used somewhere else. So like she already had like the proper, uh, uh, protocol like followed for that, for now.
So there's no onsite disposal of any of this?
No, there is no onsite disposal. She already like contracts a company to do that.
Any other questions to staff? Okay, the applicant is here, or applicant's representative?
Yes, the applicant is here, yeah.
If you would, please come state for the record your name and address.
She's also like a licensed vet, so like she, she will like explain more.
Okay, great.
My name is Sandy Wood.
If you would, tell us a little bit about your project. And, oh yeah, we need your address for the record too, please.
My address is one five five seven zero Quail Road, Fayetteville, Arkansas, seven two seven zero four.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, uh, prior to us being informed that we needed this CUP, we have been operating as we expect to continue as a mobile vet practice based out of my home for approximately five years. We don't expect any major changes as far as traffic, traffic flow, health and safety and all of that. Basically, I'm moving our operations out of a bedroom in my home into the separate office space. That's really the only major change. We may have occasional clients that visit us for like a single injection or an acupuncture treatment, or if they need to pick up medications, but we primarily have them pick up medications through our online pharmacy. This is just as a backup so that our patients that are in severe pain don't have to go time without having their pain medications.
So the, the office building, this, is it sixteen by forty building is existing now, is that correct?
That's correct.
And has, how long has that been, that structure been there?
It's been there for approximately six weeks.
Okay. And there's no water in the facility, if that was the question, there's no, there's no water in the facility, so there's no septic.
That's correct.
You're just using facilities in the house, okay. All right, questions? Okay, we'll take public comment, we may ask you to join us for some questions after that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, if there's anybody here from the public that would like to speak to this, please come up, state your name and address for the record. We'll remind you as an individual, you have two minutes to speak on each item. Three minutes, sorry, it's different, my different places. Yeah, nine minutes for a group, so please keep that in mind.
Okay, I'm Serena Tustin. My husband and I live at one three seven two zero Red Bud Drive. And I am here representing the group of neighbors that have been informed by the planning board about this. Even though I do not live within the three hundred feet, I'm approximately four hundred and fifty feet from the property. I've lived and own multiple homes in Weddington Woods for thirty-nine years. This should illustrate how much I and my family love this neighborhood. Joe Mickey, who is one of the residents who on the map received the letter at one five five eight one Quail Road, was to speak tonight on behalf of our neighbors. However, there was an unexpected funeral, and his family needed to attend it out of town. So he then asked me to speak on behalf of the neighborhood, which I'm happy to do. I want to thank the planning committee and the planning board for the opportunity this evening to share. We want to honor our neighbor Sandy and Jonathan. We and our fellow neighbors mean no harm in bringing up our concerns and sharing our opposition to their request for this conditional use permit for the expanding business. Joe had created a two-minute video of our neighborhood and where this business was located and the neighbors that were directly affected if this was passed. He had forwarded it to Laurel, and she has stated via email that the board has viewed this video. Thank you for viewing it and taking your time to view that. As shown in the video which was sent, the construction is already going on right now. This building was not placed until she decided that she wanted to expand her business. It was not used as a storage building, utility building, or any other thing. It's brand new. And this CUP meeting is happening today. There was construction there yesterday and today, creating ramps, creating overhang, without any communication from Sandy or Jonathan at any time over the last six weeks to any of her neighbors who are going to be directly affected by this. There is apparently no concern at all that she would be denied this CUP. She's moving forward without anyone's consent, without your consent, and without regard to our lives, our investments, our neighborhood, and our community. Weddington Woods is a neighborhood, but it's also a community. It's where we raise our families, enjoy our friends, take walks with our pets, run and ride our bikes. We have wonderful neighbors that we've known for years. Many of them are neighbors that have lived in our neighborhood for thirty-plus years. Our neighborhood is zoned and defined as residential. It is not a commercial area. In fact, as you drive west on Rupel Road, the next five, past Rupel Road, the next five miles are more and more neighborhoods, homes, and communities where commercial properties fade. This is why we all chose to invest in this area and to have homes in West Fayetteville. When we received notification of Sandy's application for the CUP, we were surprised. This request came after significant investment that had been already made by her to expand the business with the addition of the large building, a parking lot, in her yard. All this was done with no communication to neighbors. As we read the CPU, we began to realize that Sandy is expanding her business regardless of the CPU's request. And as we read her proposal, we found ourselves in disagreement with the soft sell of how her business would affect our neighborhood, our lives, and our investments. With very little time to consider the CP, CUP, the prep of this meeting, we gathered our neighbors to learn their thoughts, and we agreed that we needed to share our opposition. Weddington Woods is a residential area. While there are home-based businesses in our neighborhood, they are strictly owner-operated businesses. There are no employees traveling in and out, no clients visiting, and no brick-and-mortar office buildings. Traffic, many neighbors are concerned about the increased traffic with our streets that this business would create. There are small children nearby in homes just across her street that are close to the road, and unfamiliar traffic in and out is a risk to those children. Lots of people walk themselves, walk their animals, and ride bikes throughout this neighborhood. And with the narrow winding roads, this is an increased safety risk. You should have also noticed upon view of the video that clients have to come quite a ways into the neighborhood in order to get to her home, which sits on a narrow street that is curved. It is in full view of all her neighbors that are in, on the other side of her property, across the road, and by all the neighbors that drive by their homes. Safety, another concern is the increase of strangers in our neighborhood. Weddington Woods is a pri, is private, and our traffic is made up of residents, their friends, and family. Bringing unrelated people into our neighborhood brings up safety concerns. Several residents have already had cases of theft and worry that bringing strangers into the neighborhood will increase this risk of future incidents. My question would be, she has been successful so far having drugs within her home business. Wouldn't moving them to this simple shed be more likely for a wayward person to break into and steal those drugs and chemicals? Setting a precedent. Another concern is that changing the zoning of this lot to commercial sets a precedent for other people to change their zoning as well to commercial and to set up more businesses within our neighborhood. Once a precedent is set for establishing brick-and-mortar businesses, it will be very difficult to control. Not only that, but this property would remain, as our understanding, a commercially zoned property. And any future owner could use it as another business that is not in alignment with our neighborhood at all. Weddington Woods is a quiet residential neighborhood with single-family homes. It is not a place for businesses to put up buildings and signs right out in the middle of their homes. It is not a place to have clients visit, pump trucks making frequent trips, strangers coming in and out, and possible future expansions. Future expansions of this business is another concern. Any business is meant to expand, meant to expand, that's to be expected. We understand that the CUP in place, there is the possibility to expand without oversight from the county or the need to modify the CUP. Given that the aquamation service is set up without notifying adjacent property owners, we worry about other services that will be added without notification. When you consider the proximity of the property to our homes and daily view of the eye, of the future expansion is a strong concern of ours. She states that this is not intended to be a full-service clinic, but what's to stop that from happening if the CUP is granted? She states a place that people can quote "pick up medications" from. Isn't that already happening with her home-based business? How does this building and this CUP change what she's already doing in her own home? Line of sight. Given the terrain of the property in question, the only place to develop is right along the road front. In the application descriptions, it stated that the building and parking is shielded from the view of neighbors to the west. Well, that is not true. If you saw the video, the neighbors to the west are right across the street from her, and all four houses have direct line view of that building. This is perfectly fine for a home or a residential outbuilding. A business with a sign and additional parking is not fine. We are here to invest in our properties and to be neighbors, not to see commercial businesses. A neighbor directly across the street will soon be selling their home of seventeen years. And they are highly concerned about the valuation that this will have on their property selling in our neighborhood. All of us are worried about this. Having a business such as proposed right in the midst of the residential neighborhood is sure to impact our investments and our property's value. The environmental impact of the aquamation service is a concern. It's concerning that she has been operating this aquamation system in her home garage for approximately five years now. None of us knew about it until this last week when we received the letters.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're, we're at our time limit, I need to ask you.
Can I give, can I have a few more sentences, please?
If you would, wrap it up pretty quick.
Okay, thank you. This aquamation system is highly concerning. None of us have seen dump trucks or pump trucks come and remove the debris. We would like to ask that there be receipts for the last five years, be presented that this aquamation effluence has been removed properly and not just put into her septic tank or put on the groundwater. Because behind her property, you can barely see it, the two properties that connect her, there is a small pond. We have a lot of wildlife in this area, and they use that pond as a drinking source. This is concerning to us. Many of us have whales.
Okay.
How does that affect it? Thank you.
I do have one question for you.
Yes.
Do you, does your neighborhood have an HOA or POA in place?
No, we do not. We do have, uh, um, I don't know what they're actually called, but covenants.
Okay.
That were originated when the addition was made back in the seventies. And, and we do have covenants. Some areas of, of Weddington Woods, those covenants have expired. In other areas, they are still in effect.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, uh, anybody else here to speak?
Can I make a few comments?
Yes, okay.
So we checked into the covenants, like they expired, and they were like, they were established in nineteen seventy-three, July seventeenth, nineteen seventy-three. They don't have an active POA. We checked before, beforehand.
I would assume.
Yeah, the other thing I need to clarify, the CUP or the zoning, um, the CUP runs with the land. Let's say like she gets like approved today, so as long as the business stays the same, the CUP stays. If the business changes, it requires to have another CUP. If the business fails, everything revolves, uh, goes back to agricultural residential, so it's not like forever. So, uh, the other thing, modifying the CUP, if she changes anything in the business or adding or expanding, she has to apply for either a CUP, um, adjustment, amendment, or she has to go to the large scale. Customers, that's one of the things, that's why we ask her like to apply for a CUP because she already has customers, so. Uh, and the fencing, it's one of the, our conditions to have like a proper fencing. So like nobody can see what she is doing. So we put this in the condition.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and bring it back. I want to continue with public comment. We'll wrap it up after we take all the public comment. Let's, let's continue with additional public comment. We'll, we'll come back and wrap up after that. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Laura Hilton, one five five seven nine Quail Road, Fayetteville, Arkansas, seven two seven zero four.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton.
I'm directly across the street from Sandy. Okay, so comments, um, I don't believe she's done aquamation for the five years. I remember them installing it. I've lived at my house for about five years. I've been working at home, inside my house, from twenty twenty with COVID. So I do get to see the traffic that comes and goes throughout our neighborhood. Um, I believe I see three cars, maybe two cars coming and going on a standard basis of her employees. And they park in her driveway. And, let's see, uh, the aquamation, if you look into it further, it's actually a new technology to kind of do greenhouse gas balancing kind of things. It's more eco-friendly than like cremation that uses the fire furnaces and stuff. I was not part of this. I'm the one who's directly across. No real big conference was final letter, stuff like that. So I'm just saying, I'm sure it's a concern for the neighborhood, but not a concern for everyone. Sounds like she's gonna get fencing around to do some disguising of buildings, perfectly fine, that sort of thing. I haven't noticed any increased traffic with her business because she is a mobile vet, so she has her home base where employees get in the car, and then they drive to their clientele, that sort of thing. So there's three cars. I was worried with the letter that I read about it being like a like tax shop sort of thing, where you come and get supplies on like a daily basis, but it sounds like it might be more of like an appointment kind of setup. You know, she has her people going out with her on her trips. There may not be somebody always there. I don't know, she can tell you guys further. So, we're out in the middle of nowhere, yes, so I don't imagine it's gonna be like the mall where we have running traffic all day long. So it is at an S-turn, which is a little bit concerning where they place it just because of traffic flow. But it's flat, and it's pretty open around the road, so I feel like you should be able to see traffic coming and going. So no concerns there. That's really all I had. Just saying, I'm the one who's across the road. I have two small children at home. I watch my kids in the front yard, so.
Okay.
That sort of stuff.
Thank you.
I think aquamation is a cool thing, so look more into it, green energy.
Okay, thank you. All right, who else would like to speak to this? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Okay, my name's Jimmy Green, and I live at one three seven three five Red Bud Drive. And I'm, um, my property is to the east of this lady. And I have the largest, uh, border than any of the other neighbors with her property. But I think that this is bigger than this room, this problem, because it's a, it's not even okayed in the state of Arkansas. There's no law on it. And there are twenty-one states, I believe, that are where it is legal, uh, this animal disposal. And they have regulations, and they have licenses. And I have a pond on my property, which she mentioned. And, and it's not that far from her property, you know? And I think there should be a vi, an environmental impact study done on this in case, because she stores chemicals on her property. And that was my biggest concern. I'm, I don't, uh, mind her being my neighbor, uh, you know, I know she's a veterinarian, she goes and does her work, and that's fine. But like I said, they, this got dropped on us like, what, two weeks ago, you know? And we just find out that this is going on where there are disposing of animals. What's to say that she's not gonna bring in more animals, you know, to be disposed of from other businesses? Uh, I just disapprove of it, and I think it needs some more looking at. And I didn't mean to speak tonight, but thank you.
We're glad you did, Mr. Green. Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else want to make comment on this? If you would, please come, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Beth Lyman, one five six zero seven Quail Road. I am directly across the street from the building that is being put up by Ms. Wood. Um, when I first heard about this, honest and truly, I was in, I'm in favor of small businesses. I run a small business myself, and I was, I rooted for the person who's trying to build, and I understand all of that. I honestly do, because I've been there. My only concern on this whole thing is commercial property. I don't want a commercial building, property, and sign across the street from my house. I am the one, or my husband and I are the ones who are trying to sell our home. Weddington Woods has been a beautiful place to raise a family. I can look out my front door, and I see trees, I see wildlife, I see bushes and wildflowers. I don't want to see a sign that says "Animal Clinic." If I wanted that, I would live on Weddington. So that's my only beef. Other than that, a home-based business, I hope she grows and thrives. I'm fine with all of that. I don't understand the aquamation. I know nothing about veterinary. Blood grosses me out. I don't want to have anything to do with that. I just don't want a commercial business across the street from my house. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Lyman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
This is Chris Vaught, uh, fifteen six eighty-eight Quail. Um, we're, our property is four hundred and thirty feet from Mrs. Wood's property. And, and, um, we certainly don't bear Mrs. Wood any ill will. We like to see people succeed, but we are concerned, um, about the property values. I mean, and she's obviously a smart lady. You can't be, um, a veterinarian if you aren't intelligent. But with all due respect to her, she doesn't, isn't an expert on property values. So we are, we are concerned about that. We would like to see some sort of impact study. We also are concerned about the aquamation process. We looked into it a little bit. It looks fairly inert, but the liquid itself that's in the tank is caustic, or else it wouldn't break down the animal material. And so... And so, we would like to know what spill protection or countermeasures that are in place to keep that from the groundwater. But mostly, we're concerned about rezoning it. And, and we know that, you know, she can't start a little clinic, veterinary clinic, and then turn into, you know, a construction shop. But if she continues to expand in, in kind or like business, then that may fly under the radar, so to speak. And so, we're concerned about animal feces and animal byproducts and so forth. So, that's our concern. We certainly don't want to stifle business and we, we definitely wish her well, but we are, we do have at least a, you know, a dog in the fight, so to speak, use the veterinary term, but. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vought. I would point, point out that, again, it's a conditional use for this, for this purpose on this property. There is no zoning in the county, so we're not rezoning it. Our quest is not to rezone the property commercial, it's to allow this conditional use commercial at this site at this time. Just for clarification. Anybody else like to speak from the public on this item? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the applicant, if you would. Questions of the applicant? Go ahead.
Obvious concerns or disposal of animals or animal byproducts on the, on the property? Has that ever been done?
I'd like to go into more detail, if I may, about the aquamation process, what that entails and how we control our impact on the environment.
Okay. Thank you.
So, aquamation uses, as, as Sam was saying, sodium hydroxide and potassium hydroxide. These are the same chemicals that are used to make soap. I don't know if that kind of helps to make it more understandable. They're the same chemicals that are used to make soap. While they can have an impact on the environment, we take extreme precautions with this. So, our effluent, the liquid byproduct, is put directly into stainless steel tanks, which are not affected by the liquid. There is no risk of leakage. I had a certified plumber do all the connections, a licensed plumber. And then from those tanks, it is put directly into the disposal company's unit. There is absolutely no leakage into our ground. There is no pumping or spreading of it onto our land. I would also like to state that the liquid byproduct, which is only hydrolyzed animal proteins, and while the chemicals do cause it to be a very alkaline fluid, we use, we use CO2 to change the pH. So, when it is finished, that process is done, it is actually registered as a fertilizer. So, it, it can be land-applied. It is cer, it is certified by the Arkansas State Plant Board as a fertilizer because it helps plants grow. It's just hydrolyzed animal proteins. Everything in it is broken down so incredibly small that it's actually the only approved method for the disposal of animal bodies that have been affected by prion diseases like mad cow disease, because it's the only one that has been safe for that process and everything's completely broken down. So, again, the big points are, our chemical storage is a safe waterproof container. It is locked, it is secure. We don't store very much on the land. It is, it is a two-by-four-foot storage unit with a lock on it. So, there's not very much chemicals that we keep with us. It is the same that is used to create soap. It is not exposed to our land. It could be because it is a certified fertilizer, but we have it disposed of correctly. We don't produce very much of it because we are a very small business. So, our pumps, our, our tanks can hold one thousand, one hundred gallons. We have two stainless steel tanks and we have that pumped out about once every three months. So, again, not a lot of traffic and to that point, they haven't noticed that happening because it doesn't happen often. Like my neighbor was saying, our employees park on our property. The only reason they park on the side of the road is if we have a delivery coming, which doesn't happen very often, two to three times a year. The parking lot that was referred to, what had happened was the building was already on order and set to be delivered before we were informed that we needed a CUP. And in the past six weeks since that has happened, we have gone to great lengths to get everything done because we want to be in compliance. We did not mean to be doing business outside of that compliance and we've been working very quickly to make that happen. And I think that, not to toot my own horn, I, I think I've done a pretty good job, especially this week when we found out from the health department what the recommendations were and then getting the ball rolling on the septic inspection and then getting that septic pumped out again tomorrow. None of this is going into my septic tank. We know my septic tank can't handle that kind of fluid and we don't want to put that into our ground. As far as what is produced, so it produces the liquid byproduct, it also produces the bone remains. And the reason that we started doing aquamation was because we weren't pleased with how the other options in our area were handling our patients. So, we decided to create our own option. I do mostly senior care. I'm one of the only hospice-certified veterinarians in this area and I'm the only mobile clinic in this area. We've been working out of our bedroom and the reason why this has to, has changed is not because we're expanding as a business, it's because that bedroom space is needed now. I have a two-year-old daughter and my father was diagnosed with stage four terminal cancer and it's likely that my mom will be coming to live with us. So, we need that third bedroom. They had the sixteen-by-forty building already built and I wanted to get things going preferably before the end of last year, and so that is why we got a building that large. A parking lot was mentioned earlier. What happened with that is when the building was delivered, I had been advised by the excavator landscape gravel guy on the placement of the building. It was delivered and set on this first gravel pad. I then saw on our survey that that was on a utility easement, so I paid to have another gravel pad created and I paid to have the building moved to the secondary pad. The first gravel pad will be removed. That is going to be happening very soon. The construction that has been going on for the past two days has been handicap-approved ramps so that we can actually access the building, which will need to happen whether or not the CUP is approved. If it is not approved, what will happen is that building will become a storage area for my personal effects and I will likely have to close the business because I can't afford to do, like renting a, if you have to rent a commercial space, then it usually costs too much to be able to do the mobile practice. I only see four to five appointments in a day and that's not gonna pay for a commercial space. So, just to, just to let you guys know why, is it, it is not that we are expanding, it's just that we have to move the space out of my home.
Okay. Thank you. Couple of questions. You've seen the, the conditions is proposed by staff, limitation on hours, limitation on parking. Do you have any concerns with, with any of those?
I'm unfamiliar with the limitation on hours that was recommended.
Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM, and Saturday, no more than nine AM to three PM.
That was, that was our hours that I set.
Okay. All right. And then the other question that's been mentioned is the desire for a sign, a maximum by six foot by six foot, non-illuminated sign on the building. Is that something you, you need? You need it that big? What's your, your thoughts on the sign?
We, we don't need it that big. That was something that Sam had said was kind of a standard thing. We just want our client.
That was the maximum, so.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry. That is only so that our client would know where to pick up the medication. It's like, it's this building, not my house.
Okay. Okay. Other questions of the applicant?
Would just an address sign be adequate? Just my sign that told you, said your adder, your address on it with no advertisement?
I could make that work if that is a contingent thing. I'm, I'm happy to do like a sign this big on the building.
Six by six seems large.
Yeah, I would agree.
For in a neighborhood.
Could we say like a two by two? You know, something just to mark the building.
Two by two, three by three. I, I just think six by six.
Yeah.
And again, I'm just.
That was just something I hadn't changed and I apologize.
Okay. You have some questions?
Yeah, I think the sign thing was my issue. It seems to be one of the neighbors' concerns and, you know, they have these political yard signs that are out by the road and something of that nature. You know, you can accommodate your neighbors probably with that a lot better. Has weddings, is that Weddington Fire Department out there?
Yes, sir.
And have they looked at this chemical, you know, in case of fire, what, you know? And they come in and they tear up everything and it all goes all over the floor?
Well, they, the, the fire department over there was informed, but I guess like they were like misunderstanding how things work from like their perspective. So, basically, we are like handling this the way it should be handled, like what like we handle everything, is that like she is responsible like to build and do all the safety of the chemicals based on whatever like the state and the, like the state code like requires. And one of the things we put like in our conditions, she, she has like designated like hazardous like cabinets or like corrosive like material like cabinets that's like locked, nobody will be able to access them but her.
Those triangles signs with the numbers in them?
Yeah, she can always do that, like corrosive, poisonous.
Is that just for the fire department's protection?
Yeah. It's basically the standard.
We have that, we have that in.
And we already consulted with the health department about any of this, all of this. And one of the things like she is aware of, that they don't mix animal products or like byproducts with humans. So, there is no way she can, she's not supposed to dump any of that product into the septic, which is like human remains. So, we don't, we don't mix animal products with like a human, like wastewater. Yeah, exactly.
Well, there is a proposed condition of use, number five, that says handling and disposal of waste material, debris, pet remains and all of the byproducts and chemicals utilized by this clinic, so comply with all state reg, state and local regulations. So, I think that's a good catch-all. If the state does regulate that at some point, obviously you'd have to come in compliance with that to keep the condition.
Yeah. And if you look at the health, health like department conditions, number five is the same thing. She's like handling all of this, using White River like environmental, like septic pumping company so she can, that's what they're doing, so they can pump, take somewhere else, like and dispose of it like properly.
Any other questions of the applicant from the board?
Hi. I just want to know, did you by chance look at the other states that had their allow this and see what their law, rules and regulations were?
Yes. I actually, the company that creates the aquamation equipment, BioResponse Solutions, they have a biologist on staff, they have several engineers, and they helped guide us through this process. I did reach out to several state agencies, looking for regulations, looking for licenses, and I was coming up empty on all accounts because there is no state regulations here in Arkansas. As far as other states, we are in full compliance as far as safety and with disposal. So, those are kind of the two main things that other states have regulated as far as aquamation.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board.
Also, like we, she, she's applying for like a permit from ADAQ in case if there's anything. And let's say like ADAQ has any question for her, like they're like very efficient, they will like have you on their schedule. You don't have to ask for inspection, they will come and inspect you regardless, so.
Thank you. The building itself? Yeah, the building is sixteen by forty.
It's well secured, well secured?
Yes.
Can it be picked up or towed off or anything?
No, no. It is a permanent set building. It will have locks and like the doorbell type cameras so that it can be monitored. Controlled substances will remain in my home and non-controlled substances such as antibiotics, things like that, will be kept in that storage building.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Do we want to have the condition on size? Yeah. So, can I, can I make a recommendation? How about a two by three sign? Two by two?
Absolutely.
What, I think six by six is large. I don't think you need it that large.
I neglected to change that on the paperwork.
Yeah, so, maximum of two by three, unlit sign?
Okay.
Are you good with that?
Yep.
We have a motion for approval, subject to the change of the condition from the changing from a six by six, non-illuminated sign to a maximum two by three, non-illuminated sign. Any other questions or, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna go a little different here because we did not have a quorum or the six votes we needed for the, no, it's okay. But that is the next item on the agenda. So, let's adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn the Washington County Planning Board meeting at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm gonna call to order then now the Washington County Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting. Roll call, please.
Joan Maynard. Jay Piercy. Neil Helm. Maria Banks. Philip Humbard. Lauren Shackelford.
Here. All right. We have a quorum. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have approval of the agenda. There's one thing on the agenda. It's a variance hearing for Highland Park, I'm sorry, Highland View Estates variance on a setback. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. If we could have staff report on item A, Highland View Estates variance, please.
This is our vicinity map and the site map. And these are the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance due to an encroaching structure that was built partially in front of, in the front twenty-five foot setback. The parent tract is five point four seven acres and to date, planning staff has not received any comments concerning this project. The arrow in the image points out where it goes over the front setback and we have our standard planning conditions.
Okay. So, the setback, it's in the setback, the corner of the building is in the setback based on the front of the property, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it's just the corner of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had my bearing straight. Any questions of other board members on the staff report? If not, the applicant is here. Our applicant's represented?
Yeah.
If you would, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. Alan Reed, one eighteen South College Avenue, Fayetteville. I'm here representing Tammy Reed.
Okay.
No connection, no relation.
Okay. All right. Anything that we're missing from staff report? Anything you want to add as far as what, what we're looking at here?
No. I had first been on the property in twenty sixteen and the situation was like that back then. When Tammy came to me this time around, she was just looking to replat the lot into three different tracks and it was then came up that the corner of the trailer looked like it had been encroaching into a twenty-five foot setback and utility easement.
Okay.
I don't think they did that on purpose. I think it was just an oversight or a mistake. I can't explain why, but I noticed on the original plat of that subdivision, it called for the setback and utility easement to be measured from the center of the road. Well, they could, I think they just assumed that anything between the center of the road and twenty-five feet, you know, they had to stay away from and they did. But as it is, the setback, I think properly should be measured from the right-of-way, not the center of the road. But it was clearly stated on the drawing in the courthouse that they could use a center. But it was clearly stated on the drawing in the courthouse that they could use the center of the road as the boundary, so.
So the structure's been there at least since 2016, you believe?
Yeah, yeah. It's probably been there longer than that. But that was the first time I was there. I did a survey for a title company and it came up.
All right, any questions of the applicant's representative? Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, close it and bring it back to the board. I do have one question to staff because I ask this every time we do one of these. If it's in a utility easement, if utilities had to be used in that easement, it would be the disgrace, it would be the responsibility of the property owner to fix any property that was damaged for that. So you're not, we're not vacating that utility easement. We're approving a variance that the owner's taking the risk that if that utility easement is used in it, they have to fix the property. Okay, just want to make sure I was, okay, any other questions on this? Any, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I like a motion that we approve the variance for the Highland View Estates.
Got a motion, I'll second. Are you second? Anybody else? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, I'll take a motion now to adjourn the zoning board of adjustments meeting.
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Do we have to do roll call again? Okay, let's do roll call.
Joan Maynard. Jay Piercy. Neil Helm. Maria Banks. Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Still here. All right, let's move back to the Washington County Planning Board. We have already approved the agenda. We'll keep moving down the agenda. Obviously, I made that deviation from this so we could take the next item, which is the replat of the Highland View Estates Lot One. Staff report, please.
All right, this is our same image for the vicinity map. And the site map. And the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a replat to split one five point four seven acre tract into three new parcels. Tract one A would be one point four seven acres. And tract one B and one C would both be two acres. A thirty-foot access and utility easement will run north from Mineral Springs Road along the western property line, providing access to Lot one A and one B. To date, planning staff has not received any comments concerning the project. And we have our standard planning conditions.
Okay. Any questions from the board members of staff? If not, I'll bring it back to the applicant's representative?
It's residential for, yeah.
Alan Reed, one eighteen South College Fayetteville, representing Tammy Reed. I don't think I have any additional comments. I could answer any questions if there were.
So there's a thirty-foot utility and easement combined access that runs the west side of the property, correct?
Yes, it's correct. It will run across lots, uh, one C, one B, and terminate at the south line of one A.
Okay. Looks like from the topo map, there's pretty fair grading through that, nothing significant there.
It's not, it's not that bad. It's pretty mild terrain, really.
Okay, all right. Is that easement going to be built at this time? Is that subject to lots being sold? Do you have any idea on that?
These lots are going to pass to her children, I think, kind of in a will maybe. But she wanted to get it straightened out ahead of time. But I believe her mother might be living in that mobile home and I think they may have. She may have moved out or maybe somebody moved in to take care of her. So this is kind of just kind of estate planning.
So the answer would be that, that road, that easement's not going to be built?
No, it's not being used right now, no.
Okay, all right. That's my, okay.
As a reminder, if this was like a family split, we've never have seen it, but it's in like a subdivision. It has to be a replat.
I'm with you. Okay, that's the questions I had of the applicant. Other questions from board members? Okay. Anybody from the public would like to address us regarding this replat? Seeing none, I'll close public, uh, public comment and bring it back to the board. Sorry, tongue tied.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion for approval? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, item C, replat of the Tisdale Edition subdivision Lot B. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map of the area. And the site map. And these are the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a replat of a six acre tract to split it into two parcels. Tract B one would be one acre and tract B two would be five acres. To date, planning staff has not received any comments concerning the project. And we have our standard planning conditions.
Okay. Questions from board members of staff on the report?
I don't see any septic shown as it contained on the front lot of the existing house.
I don't think that's part of the split.
It's not part of the split, maybe I'm, oh, it's on the top part, okay. Okay, I was looking at it wrong, sorry. So there is no house on it? Never mind.
Okay, any other questions of the board? Okay, if the applicant's here, if you would, please, applicant or applicants representative, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Reed making a living tonight?
Alan Reed, one eighteen South College Fayetteville, Arkansas, here representing Billy Joe and Bobby Joe Wilson, the owners of the parent tract. They want to subdivide this or replat this into two lots. Lot B one will be transferred to their granddaughter. The granddaughter's father, Mr. Tisdale, is here with me if you have any questions for him. He was born and raised on this property. This is a huge farm, Tisdale Farm. It was split up into tracks years ago. We did the survey and it has remained a six acre tract for, oh, I know, well over twenty years. And now, now the granddaughter is interested in living out there close to her grandmother. So we're in front of you asking to get a one acre replat of track B.
So the, the, the house that Commissioner Humbert was asking about, the two-story masonry home, that is not, is part of the parent tract, it's not part of the split, is that correct? Or is it on a different tract, just for clarification?
The two-story masonry home is where the grandparents live?
Okay.
Yes.
And then my only question was on track two B, the five acre tract, it shows there's a metal shop there. Is there utilities? Is there septic? Is there ingress egress assigned for that metal shop?
You know, I don't believe so, but Mr. Tisdale might be.
Donnie's right there?
Yeah, there's not, there's not any utilities there.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's the questions I had of the applicant. Board? Okay, appreciate it, sir. Thank you. I'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody from the public that would like to make a comment regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve the replat of Tisdale Edition subdivision Lot B as presented.
Got a motions or a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Fayetteville Planning Area, item D, Blackberry Ridge Final Subdivision Phase Two. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map. And the site map. And these are the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting final subdivision approval to allow a twenty-two point nine three acre parcel to be split into nineteen single-family lots. Each parcel will range from zero point six seven acres to one point four, eight four acres in size. Lot thirty-three is non-buildable and will be used as common space. And to date, planning staff has not received any comments concerning the project. The three-phase subdivision development project received a variance and conditional use permit approvals at the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty Planning Board meeting. And CUP was ratified by the quorum court at the September twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting. The project also received its preliminary subdivision approval for all three phases at August, at the August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty Board, Planning Board meeting. And we have our planning conditions.
Okay. All right, appreciate it. Any questions from board members of staff on the report? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the applicant or the applicant's representative, please. If you would, please state your name and record, or name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Caroline Gardner with Crafton Toll. I'm at three hundred North College in Fayetteville, Arkansas. And I am the representative.
Okay, appreciate it. Anything you want to tell us about the project?
Um, no, sir. They really, there's not much more than that, just.
Yeah, we've, we've been working with Ms. Gardner like since last February, back and forth, like with the engineers. And like there is nothing wrong with the grading. They upgraded some of the ditches. And like the road department approved it and the engineering had no, no comments. Everything is being like, met all the requirements. It's basically, it's, it's the final, we have to go before like we sign the final plans. We have to do like a walkthrough with the engineers and the road department, make sure whatever like we see on the plans fits the ground and like what we sign after that and that's it.
Has that been done or will that be done subject to?
I know, that's, that will be done based on the approval today. But like the final plans wouldn't, won't be signed until like we do the walkthrough.
No, no issues with any of the county staff that's reviewing this?
No, we've never had any issue with that. Like since, I mean, I'm not sure, like some of you might remember some of the, Mr. like Humbert, I guess like and Mr. Helm, like they remember this came as like a conditional use permit and a variance. And it was like a big area, three phases were approved. So yeah, they finalized one, phase one last year and they're finalizing one this year. And I guess like they're going to establish phase three soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yes, um, yeah, we're finishing up waters, Fayetteville water is the only thing. We're finishing that up. Should have final inspection that'll go through Fayetteville, so.
Yeah, everything will be signed after. We'll get all the utilities signing on it.
Are these on sewer or are they on septic?
Septic, yes, sir.
And everything's parked, the six point six seven acre lots parked, everything's parked well?
Yes, sir. We've gotten approval from the health department as well. They made them park all of the lots before we started all this, so.
They're required to have at least like two, two spots to make sure like everything works. Yeah, it's a state law, yeah.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing and bring it back to the board.
It's like the one to the top next to that, the very top, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Maria, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, moving on.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Farmington Planning Area, item E, the replat of Bethel Elm subdivision lots number seven and eight, please.
This is our vicinity map. Because it didn't perk. The combined lot overall size will be two acres. And to date, planning staff has not received any comments concerning the project.
So my only question, I'll probably ask this every time, if it's a lot combination and we're going to a bigger piece, why could this not be approved administratively? Why is this before the board?
Uh, because it's like in a planted subdivision. And this was approved like few months back. And it was even noted like that's like lot number seven like non-buildable because it did not perk. So they found, they had the opportunity to find like a buyer. He wants like to buy both of them. But he wanted to build like the house in the center of it and have the septic on the other side, so.
Okay, because it's a plot, lot, block subdivision, that's why we have to, okay. All right, I always get confused by that.
Yep, yep, yep.
In my other job, you don't.
It's the same as the previous one. The only reason we can't, like Mr. Reed was here because it's a split with them.
Okay, all right. Any other questions sta- from the board on staff report? Is the applicant here? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Karen Ramirez, Engineering Services, twelve oh seven South Old Missouri Road, Springville, Arkansas.
Appreciate it. Okay, so you heard our conversation. It's, we got one lot that, one lot that wouldn't perk. So we're combining it with another one. Do we got a fair grasp of the project?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant from the board? Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak of this item? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board. Got a motion by Maria for approval?
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Item F, Tawny Town Planning Area, Deer Valley Preliminary Subdivision. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map. The site map. And the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting preliminary subdivision approval to allow seventy-six point nine three acres to be split into thirty single-family lots. Each parcel will range from seven point eight nine acres to one point four nine acres in size. To date, planning staff has not received any comments concerning the project. The project will utilize private septic systems for sanitary sewer. There was a pond affecting lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight that has been filled. Soil percolation pits will not be, were not observed on lot twenty-three and it will not be developed because it's non-buildable until sewer becomes available or alternative approved percolation tests are provided. And then these are our planning conditions.
I think one more thing. So we've been working on this like with the, um, city of Tawny Town. And this, this project was approved by the city. And it's coming to the county to be approved because it's in the planning area. And they had no issue with the city. But the issue now with this project would be not the planning as much as like the roads. So they have like to make sure like they, it's like the roads department conditions. So there we can move forward. So so far, we haven't had any issue for the preliminary. But when it comes to the final, they have to do the inspection. And it's the same story when they apply for the final, it has to be like a walkthrough what happened. And if the conditions aren't met, they will sign the final plat. So eventually, when this is approved, they're, they're going to have to apply for the final.
Okay, so it was, make sure I'm understanding, it was approved by Tawny Town? But there may be additional road?
Uh, it's, um, so they, they work with Tawny Town, but the road's completely in the county, so.
Gotcha, okay, all right. Okay, and then the question, Mr. Board Humbert, go ahead.
Are these boxes we're seeing on each lot, are those the septic? Septic and alternate septic locations or what?
I believe so. Right, Miss Karen? Yes. Yes.
Okay, any other questions of staff from the board?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just more out of curiosity, when a pond is filled, obviously, was it dead pond? What would keep it from, if it was, what was sustaining the water in the pond?
I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't guess I understand your question.
They filled a pond. So like there's live ponds and there's dead ponds. Once they fill it, what's to keep it from?
Well, they would have to take that into consideration from water retention, so.
When they do the drainage analysis, like they take into consideration all the calculations. And once it's filled, it becomes a filled, so they cannot use it for septic. And that's why like one of them, for instance, like I can't remember which one, like is it thirteen or thirty-three? It did not perk in any place, so like it's deemed non-buildable right now until like it's either like goes into septic, uh, not septic, goes into like the sewer, sewer system, sewer system. Or it's going to stay like this until like maybe technology changes, so.
So I think your specific question is it's, it's, it's not a spring-fed pond, it's not creating water, it's a retention pond.
Yeah, it's connected, it's connected.
Basically, they can fill that in, but that water volume will have to be accounted for in the, in the, in the retention for the overall septic.
Yeah, and they do already have like all the stormwater like huge pipes, so like they can go like underneath the, 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 the whole subdivision.
Okay, any other questions of the board for staff report? If not, I'll ask the applicant or the applicant's representative? If you would, please again, state your name and address for the record.
Karen Ramirez, twelve oh seven South Old Missouri Road, Springville, Arkansas.
All right, appreciate it very much. Anything you want to tell us specifically about the project?
I think Mr. Ada has covered most of what needs to be done.
All right. Questions of the applicant from the board? Okay, public comment. Anybody would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion that we approve the Deer Valley Prelim subdivision as presented.
Got a motion for approvals or a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, other business, discussion of current development and planning department activities? All right, thank you very much, moving on, other business, discussion of current development and planning department activities?
Our, uh, code of ordinances, um, two days ago, the, uh, new flood plan permit passed the service committee and it's going to be presented next quorum court, which is the eighteenth. To, to adapt like the new flood maps and that will be reflected like eventually on our website and by the twenty-fifth, we're going to have the new maps posted.
Great.
Absolutely.
Okay, um.
We're going to have like a few changes, uh, on the planning boards, mo- most likely Mr. Neil Helm, he's going to help us out until like we find a replacement. Mr. Jay Piercy, he's going to stay with us, so we'll update you as soon as we get like more information.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. And like we really appreciate like you Neil for everything you've done.
Continuing to serve Jay and thanks for helping us.
Absolutely, he's the best.
Until we can find a replacement, thank you very much. All right, anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion? All those in favor say aye? Any?